I have a thumbs up. That means we're Facebook Live. This is our meeting of December the 19th. This is our last meeting of 2023. The year has flown by. If you would please, we're going to call this meeting to order. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. We'll follow that with an invocation by Alderman Sistrunk and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Sistrunk, if you would please.
Loving God, thank you for the opportunity to come and do the people's business tonight. During this season, help us to savor the days and moments so we don't rush by the wonder and grace of this season. Help us to be mindful of those around us who may be struggling at a time when there's so much joy in the world. Help us to see the world through tender and compassionate eyes.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here this evening. In preparation for our new year coming in, 2024, we will conduct the city's business and we will get at that right now. First thing we have is going to be approval of the official agenda, including consented items. And there's one item on the agenda that needs to be noted to the board. That is, we have, we had a, in HR, we had someone who did not show up for a job where we had hired them, I think, at the last board meeting. And so we have substituted a name that would be the second name in there. It is on consent, but that is only if the board is in approval. But since we normally do consent the HR items for vacant positions that are being filled that are not newly budgeted. So if you would please, that's, that's the one item. Mr. Ashford, anything about that one that, other than what I just said? Okay, any, any objections to that additional?
Which name is it?
Um, it is, where did our name go? Oh, item number five. Thank you. It's the last one.
Okay.
And I got an old agenda, so I didn't have it on there. I knew the name, I didn't see a name that looked familiar. So it would be Mr. Starling as a commercial driver in sanitation and environmental services. So if there's no objection to that, we'll leave that on consent. All right, thank you very much. Anything, Alderman Carver?
No ma'am.
Either to alter the agenda or the consent items?
No ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thanks.
Alderman Sistrunk?
No ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Could I get a motion for approval of the agenda with the consenting items?
No ma'am.
Okay, that was a stereo. I need one. Who do I have? Alderman Rupp, I'll have a motion from you. And Alderman Brooks, is that second from you?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. In that case, I will read the consented items. First, we have consideration of the minutes of the November 30th, 2023 special call meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the December 1, 2023 work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. We have consideration of the minutes of the December 5th, 2023 regular meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we have consideration of the approval of the leases for parcels 1 through 5 located in the public parking lot and alleyway off Lampkin Street between Lafayette and Jackson Streets on the tax ID parcel number 118P-00-275.00. Board business, we have consideration of the reappointment of William Webb to the Golden Triangle Regional Landfill Authority for a term beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2027. Under department business, airport, we have request approval to accept an M dot 5 percent portion of the FAA bill FY, fiscal year 2023 infrastructure grant 3-28-0068-029-2023 for constructing a hangar and seal coating taxiway cracks in the amount of $16,389. Under community development and planning, we have consideration of reappointing Robert McMillan to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term. Under two, we have consideration of final plat 23-11, a request for a final plat approval for the Academy Hill Phase 2 subdivision located on Molly Drive in an SD 6 zoning district with a final version of the plat for signatures to include a note that, that there is a private drainage easement between lots 8 and 9. And three is consideration of a final plat 23-13, a request for final plat approval for Morrison subdivision at 210 Santa Anita Drive and 241 Crite Street in a TNE zoning district. Under finance administration, we have acceptance of the November 2023 financial statements. Number three is request authorization to advertise for municipal depository for all Starkville accounts. Under human resources, we have request authorization to hire Valerie McCray and Allison Ming as full-time dispatchers in the Starkville Police Department. Two is consideration of the discipline recommended by Starkville Police Chief Mark Ballad as a result of disciplinary issue for three Starkville police officers. Three is request authorization to hire Michael Bush as a residential driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Four is request authorization to hire Kessler Thompson as a non-certified firefighter. Five is request authorization to hire Ronald Starling as a commercial driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Under IT, we have request approval of professional services agreement with DOS Electric for installation of a generator at City Hall at the rate of $65 per hour. Under parks, we have consideration of approving, of approving permission to advertise for J.L. King Splash Pad Expansion Project. Police, number one, is request approval to purchase 12 additional EOS intelligent body camera systems, cradle systems with watches and holster sensors in the amount of $36,882.90 from Utility Associates, Inc., who is the sole source supplier and is compatible with the existing system. And second, under police, is request approval for Assistant Chief Henry Stewart to attend the 10-week training at the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, beginning in January 1, beginning in January 2024, with advanced travel and training costs of $2,700. Under utilities department, we have one, accept authorization consistent with presidential determination number 2022-19 from Howard Industries, Inc. to purchase six 100 KVA transformers in the amount of $124,542. Number two is accept emergency authorization consistent with the presidential determination number 2022-19 from Trans Armor, Inc. to recondition two substation transformers in the amount of $6,300. Number three is request authorization to approve Osmos Utility Services, Inc. as the preferred vendor for wood pole maintenance and inspection services to be completed in a three-year timeframe in the total amount of $442,679.47 or $147,559.82 per year. Four is request approval to accept the lowest bids received for sources of holistic for Starkville Utilities, Electric Division and Water Division, January 1, 2024 through June 30, 2024. And five is consideration of approving the professional services agreement with the Golden Triangle Planning and Development District in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for administering ARC-MS-21497, City of Starkville Wastewater Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project. And that completes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's my pleasure to always do that. And so we move next to mayor's comments. And I'm going to say last and final. We have, we have been alluding to this, mentioning it, talking about it. This is Alderman Carver's last meeting. And we, again, I will say publicly that we greatly appreciate his service to the city and that we will look forward to continuing to work with him. It'll be a pleasure as you transition into a county role. But I do think the partnership there is incredibly important and I look forward to us continuing that in even more robust ways. So thank you so much for that. Obviously, I like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, so I wish to do that. I hope that everyone who's in the audience and also those who are viewing will have a very Merry Christmas and that all the holidays will be wonderful for them. I was looking back at sort of the year in review. 2023 was a really big year for us. Every year is a big year, but 2023 in particular, we did, we did a lot of things. We got a lot of grants. We cut the ribbon on cornerstone. We broke ground on, on parks. We continue to do that. We've done a lot of things that I think are making a difference in a positive way in our community. And we see that all along. And however difficult some of the infrastructure improvements are, they still are necessary. And I think we can all be proud that the utilities are being upgraded to the extent they are. And we will continue to, to try to do that all over town. Main Street being one right now, Bill Graham being another. You know, we're on Old West Point Road right now. So we've got lots of things, lots of positive things going on. And I expect 2024 to be exceedingly wonderful as well. So I see nothing but good things for us in the coming years, however inconvenient a few of them might be as we work to make, make them the best we can. All right, so comments from the board, Alderman Carver.
I was finished. I'm glad I made my comments last meeting, but I missed Alderman Sistrunk. She totally tell you, thank you. Yeah, we got, we got hired together. And then her accounting skills are very valuable to the city and she's been the budget chair, de facto, for the fact that she knows a lot more about that than anybody else up here on this table. She is, has always been a pleasure to work with. And I would just say, I really enjoyed working with you over the years. I was sitting there thinking, just since we talked a minute ago, that, you know, as elected official, I say, we take a lot of cheap shots from the public. I think that just comes with social media. So no matter if you're red or blue or anything, it comes with the territory. A lot of times we get to turn our cheek. And this, and this mayor and board, regardless of the subject, works together. And so oftentimes, I get asked that in conferences and why Starkville's so successful. And I would say that that goes back to just a cohesiveness outside of this room, especially where we're, we're all getting along with our friends and care about each other and care about our families. And so, wish y'all best of luck. I keep telling people, I just, I know the next 34, 5 years from a housing standpoint, economic development standpoint. We started the bell curve. I think the biggest problem that we battle on this side of the table is growth. I think Starkville's fixing to really grow. So, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a fun ride the next decade and just to sit back and, and figure out how to, how to deal with that growth problem. So people want to come to Starkville. Every day I meet somebody else that wants to move here and retire here. And I'm an exterminator, so a lot of times I meet people the first time and I'm meeting a lot of people from Georgia and California and Texas. And I'm, why in the world do you want to move to Starkville, Mississippi? And they said, man, this, you know, I like to listen to them because, you know, they want to get back here, they've got family here. Or you know what? They just visited a couple of towns and they love it. And especially talks to California people. To hear them talk about Starkville and brag about it is pretty interesting because I don't get to see that on a day-to-day basis, you know. From living here, you just don't recognize. So wish y'all best of luck and, and that's it. And I will be glad to work with y'all in the future and do anything I can to help.
I just want to thank Alderman Carver again for his service to the city. I don't know if you know, but the first couple of meetings, I took my cues from you. I'd be over here seeing what you were doing so I wouldn't get the stinky eye from the mayor because, man, okay. So I, I learned a lot from watching you. I was talking to my wife upstairs, you know, if you're in public service, this goes for anyone who works for a municipality or county. It's a family affair. And I just remember my wife just getting real distraught, you know, when folks would say stuff about, you know, the mayor when I was in Columbus and whatnot. And it really is a sacrifice of the family as well. So I applaud you for wanting to continue to serve. I know it's in your heart. And I think you'll be a unique bridge with the county. And I wish you the best and your family as well.
Alderman Brooks?
And I'd like to add just a bit to that, too. You know, being on this floor for as long as you have, I know you'll take a different perspective because we're all county, you know, residents as well as the city. So, you know, I look forward to working with you on that. I've enjoyed working with you here. You've always had a, you know, a unique perspective on things. And we've had conversations about the issues. I always appreciate what you had to say. And I think you did a good job. Congratulations and sad part of working with you.
Alderman Beatty?
Alderman Carver, it's been a pleasure to work with you. And, and be the board bees when you would bring your expertise and knowledge and expertise and then vision to our city and to our board. So it's been a pleasure to work with you. You're gonna take that to the county board. And you're gonna create a job there. And come in, congratulate you and your election as a county board supervisor. So I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrunk?
One more. It, it has been a pleasure to, to work with you. I, I would like to say that I believe you've been one of the most positive people on the board, day in, day out, year in, year out. And that's a tremendous characteristic for somebody who is in, in this position. And I appreciate that about you as much as anything else. I also really look forward to working with you in your new role as the county supervisor. I think as, as Alderman down on that end of the table have said, it's a unique opportunity for us. You're gonna bring a, a different perspective for them. You're gonna be able to help us bridge that city-county conversation in ways that just haven't been possible in the past. So we're really looking forward to it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. General from one, just want to be very brief. Just want to thank you for all of your outstanding service that you have rendered to our great city since 2009. And I've enjoyed our working relationship since then. And I just want to close by saying that I wish you of great success in all of your future endeavors, including your entire time that you'll be with our Octavia Hall County Board Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Alderman Carver, you know, you and I, not just colleagues together, we personally, we personally, we got a personal life together. And I thank you for all the years you and I came on board at the same time. And Vice Mayor Sistrunk, we, they say, oh, budget chair Sistrunk. We came in 2009. Matter of fact, we looked at seeing your child, your oldest baby grow up because he was, well, he was eight, he was born in 2008. We came Alderman in 2009. So it's more like a family to me and you because on our trips and our conferences that we go into, we always were still together, we ate together, we spent time together, spent time with your family. It's been a pleasure, been a great pleasure. But now you're going into a disposition that you really can help us with the county and the city working together. That's what we need to do. Because we are keeping in mind that we got, we got Texas and got in the SCC, Oklahoma in the SCC. So we gotta do something to Starkville and make it bigger and better. And I believe you can play that part. But thank you for the years you and I have been together.
I want to add one little story real quick. We had our first ever, I guess I was about 29 years old. And if y'all know, Henry Vaughn still runs or walks about 45 days, or 45 miles a day, and is in great shape. And we ran a 5K down on the coast. And so I would say I was in the best shape of my life at the time. And I, the whole time I'm running across Ocean Springs Bridge, he comes in one step behind me. He's probably in his 40s at the time. And I said, oh, my goodness. So he is, we've always had a good laugh about that. But you did beat Parker Wiseman, I think. He was in between Parker and I. He came in right behind me. And I said, oh, goodness, I've got to step up my game. I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed really working with y'all, man. It's a great town and, like I said, better days ahead for sure, so we'll enjoy.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, next item is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak to the board. You have three minutes. Ms. Harden will be timing it. And we are happy to hear whatever comments that you'd like to make. Mr. Turner, good evening and Merry Christmas.
Good evening and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Good evening, thank you.
All right, our to mayor and to board, to police department, to sanitation department, to the fire department. On December 28th, at 10 o'clock, we'll be doing the swaying in of the officers, of the supervisors. Got that information today. And that is December 28th at 10 o'clock at the end of the building. In the days to come, days ahead, soon as you can, if you have to write it out, I mean, the closing of the City Hall, the trash pickup. We, we hope that elect department be home on, on the 29th. But there's snow where the closes are and so that we can be safe and careful. We coming to the end of the year cheering out or they're not gonna know what to do with themselves. And we have to be careful. One thing that concerned me is that the situation over in Columbus with the Casablanca, I guess that's what it's called, law, jurisdiction, standing ground law. We need to understand it, that we don't get a misunderstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else under citizens' comments? Anyone else? Seeing none? I'll close under citizens' comments. We have no public appearances this meeting. We do have public hearings, though. Mr. Havilan?
First public hearing we have is for RZ 23-01 and FP 23-12. This is a request by Gas Island Corporation to rezone a proposed lot at 300 Apple Street from T5C to TN-E. And for the final plat to separate that lot. This is the, where the University Motel is located. The 300 Apple Street is the last house on the left when you go down Apple Street. The current zoning designation of T5-C is primarily for dense, multi-story, mixed-use developments. It allows for up to a four-story-by-right type of development, which is appropriate for Dr. Mark Luther King Jr. Drive, but not so much Apple Street. 300 Apple Street is located in a residential street consisting of primarily single-store, single-story detached dwellings in a TN-E zoning district. If the property is so divided off the parent lot, a change in condition will have occurred and a public need to change the zoning to match the rest of Apple Street is needed. And you could see the part circled in red. That is where the lot that would be cut off. And this would remain University Motel. And there's a restaurant on bottom. And then there's a shop, I believe, right there. There is no, currently no, currently one detached dwelling on the property at 300. And there are no known zoning issues with that property. Request was noticed and accorded to BUDC. 21 property owners were notified directly by mail and a legal ad published on November 26, 2023. Assignment was also placed on the property. And as of this date, we've received one response from the notification. That was primarily for questions, what for or against. And on December 12th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning. And DRC has recommended approval of the final plat.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Havilan? Okay, none. Is the applicant in the room? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Do you have anything you wish to add? Okay, all right, all right. I'll open it as a public hearing then. At this time, if anyone wishes to speak to this particular item, either for or against, now is your opportunity. It's a public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Any discussion, any discussion among the board? Any discussion among the board?
I think it, I was gonna say.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion for approval. That is for consideration of the rezoning 2301. I have a motion for that from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks? All right, we'll vote on that and then we'll vote on the final plat separately. That way we'll have a clean record on it. So I have a motion from Alderman Carver, a second from Alderman Brooks. No further, Alderman Vaughn?
Is this your address? Is this your old address? Yeah. Yeah. You live there, right? You, you don't have anything to say?
Uh, no.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna say something, I need you to come to the mic, please, ma'am, so we'll be able to record it.
No, we didn't have anything to say. It's just that my parents have been living, you know, in that house. We just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any, you know, any, you know, conflicts with, because they've been living in there since I was about four, four years old. And, and my stepdad worked for, for a barn in Chastain for 35 years. And I just, just wanted to make sure that, you know, no, no funny business.
So there've been basically no changes to how it's currently, how you're living in or your parents are living in it?
Okay.
It would just be a change from, from a standpoint of a paperwork?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Oh, and could we get your name for the record, please, ma'am?
My name is Tanya Gillespie.
Ms. Gillespie, all right, thank you so much. Anything else, Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, I have a.
I'd, I'd just, I'd just like to say for Ms. Gillespie and for, for others that, that I think this is really important to preserve the neighborhood characteristics of that, of that street. And so I think it's gonna accomplish what your parents would want in, in keeping it as a neighborhood, neighborhood area.
All right, thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and so we need to also vote on the final plat approval. There was nothing about that other than it was unanimous, is that correct?
Yep.
Under other circumstances, we wouldn't necessarily have a public hearing. So do I have a motion for approval of the final plat?
Same move.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Rupp. No other discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Havilan, next up?
Next, we have SC 23-05. This is a request by T-Mobile to allow for an exception from the development standards related to the facade colors at 335 Highway 12 West in a C zoning district. This is right next to currently the Ceasefire Store, directly to the west of the shopping center that has Umi's in it and Lost Pizza. So it's right in that area on the south side of Highway 12. On June 6, 2023, the planning department informed the subcontractor for the applicant that it, that the chosen sign colors on the sign permit application were not going to be permitted. That's the few, the magenta color. However, when the sign was installed, the awning colors were changed from a dark bronze, as you can see on the left, to the magenta on the right. As a result, code enforcement contacted the owners regarding the violation. And upon notification, they made the request for a special exception to be allowed to keep the magenta color as seen on the right. And this is just what the note looked like in my, the, there's not necessarily any kind of approval with the note. It was just part of the approval of the sign permit. They'd made all the other changes. The applicant has submitted a statement. And basically in the statement, they're requesting to keep the magenta color to maintain brand identity. And that's also in the packet. And then here are the, the standard eight criteria for special exception review and approval. It was noticed and accorded to BUDC. Eight property owners were notified directly by mail. A legal ad was placed on November 21st, 2023, and a sign posted on the property. And as of this date, we received no response to the notification. And at the December 12th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted five to one to recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Havilan? What we have?
None? Is this more or less the same thing we did with the old time?
Yes.
Yes.
Just different color at this point. Okay.
Mr. Havilan, did the contract put a war, I mean, install the, what's the color again?
Magenta.
Before applying for the exception, or did they, did we notify them?
It, it was installed prior to filing for the exception.
But they were, were they aware that, that we had a code, that it had a color?
They were made aware of a code violation. And at that point, they chose the option to try to get the special exception.
They didn't know before that time?
Yeah. And I think there was just some, some cross wires internally with them on whether that note was communicated up higher than the person it was communicated to, to the sign contractor. So, but the applicant's here to, to speak on that if they need to.
And that's what I was gonna ask for. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to say anything to the board? If so, would you come forward, please, sir? Identify yourself and-
Yo Har.
At the mic, so we can catch it on the phone, please, thank you.
Yo Har, representative for EGI, project manager. Unfortunately, there was wires that were crossed. We weren't made aware ourselves that the magenta color, the magenta color was not approved. Otherwise, we would have gone through the proper channels to gain approval. It was a simple mistake where we weren't made aware that it wasn't approved.
Okay, all right. Any questions of the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Do you have any locations in any towns that have codes where you have to conform to those cities' codes as far as color schemes are concerned, where you do conform to?
Yes, sir. In those cases, we apply for a variance, and the majority of the time, almost 100% of the time, we gain approval. It's a trademark color.
Anything else, Mr. Beatty? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. I need to open it as a public hearing. I will do that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, either for or against, now would be your opportunity. Anyone? Anyone? All right, I will close it as a public hearing. Any further discussion among the board? I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
As much as I hate magenta, I'll say-
A second from Alderman Rupp, despite his dislike of magenta. That'll be just fine. All right, any other discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to-
Alderman Beatty?
Yes, thank you. Oh, I think that we have codes, and we have gone through a process, a 10-year process, Mayor, to lower the height of sound, and that's been an expensive thing, but it's improved the looks of Highway 12, and we have a new, we spent a lot of money, a lot of time on new comprehensive codes, and one of the things is that we're trying to somewhat have a color, not, you know, tell people what color to use, but a standard on Highway 12 that would make kind of fall into what, I guess, the scope of what we're trying to do on Highway 12 to improve the looks of our city and things like that would be. But what we're doing, and I'm saying, the rise notwithstanding, that we, the request notwithstanding, what we do, but we grant exceptions, where we put colors that don't fall into our code, that don't meet our code standards. We did this in a shopping center not too long ago, not too long ago, and with this one is, we set a precedence for the next folks coming along that's got something, it's a different color, doesn't meet our code, just, you know, granting these exceptions, and it gets to, we'll come to a point, or get to a point where the really, the code that we have doesn't work. So I guess what I'm saying is, at some point in time, and I'll say this, you know me, I'm broke and regular and stuff like this, if we have codes and we set things into our codes, we need to adhere to them as best we can, because we put them there and spent the time and thought and putting in these things into our codes to have a color scheme and a, you know, appearance that we have on Highway 12 and throughout our city is something that long-term will make our city more attractive. And so I know this, you know, this is a very small thing, but at the same time, I think going forward, we need to be careful about how we continue to grant exceptions in this area. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I certainly don't disagree with the concept of being very judicious, well, with our, with our variances. When we give them, we need to be very attentive to what we're granting, so I concur with that. Anyone else? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Okay. And motion carries. All right, thank you so much. With that, we go to the claim stocket, and I believe, guys, this is gonna be our last board action other than adjournment. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Rupp. All right, we're at least being consistent. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, and ladies and gentlemen, I will take a motion to adjourn for 2023.
Move approval.
Alderman Vaughn, was that you?
That's it.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Code. All right, Merry Christmas, everyone. Have a wonderful rest of the-